Meeting called to order.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chap— I'm sorry, councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to special event applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Because we have over 20 applications on the agenda, instead of going through each one, are there any questions on a particular application?
None for me.
Anybody have any questions?
None for me.
No, we're good.
All right, it's not—thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
We're now on to items to be presented. We have a presentation by Eric Galapo for Asbury Park Arts and Culture Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, city councilors, city officials, Councilwoman Donna Piero. I would like to thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to present to you about the development of the Asbury Park Art and Culture Plan. Many of you know me as a member of the Planning Board and a longtime resident of Asbury Park. This evening, however, I am before you in my capacity as a professional planner and urban designer, working on behalf of the city and the Asbury Park Arts Council, asking for a resolution of referral to the Asbury Park Planning Board. But before we get into that, I'd like to briefly review our agenda this evening. First, I'll give you a little bit of introduction about what's going on with the arts plan and how we arrived at this point. We'll talk about some community context, the goals and strategies that were developed as part of the arts plan, and the recommendations that have come from that, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So, the Arts and Culture Plan is an endeavor undertaken by the city in conjunction with the Asbury Park Arts Council, Monmouth Arts, the Monmouth County Department of Planning, and the New Jersey State Council of the Arts. My role has been to provide professional arts and cultural planning services through my firm, FCA. We are a multidisciplinary planning and design firm with offices in Philadelphia, New York, and Orlando. Over the years, we have done arts and culture plans for municipalities and institutions, including the St. Louis garment district master plan, the Salt Lake City Arts and Culture Plan, Ocala Arts and Public Places Plan, and we're currently working on a public art master plan for the city of Hoboken, New Jersey. All funding for this project was provided through a Monmouth County COVID-19 Community Recovery Grant that is sponsored by and administered by the Asbury Park Arts Council. The first question many people ask, and I would like to address, is why an arts and culture plan? As you may know, the 2017 City Master Plan defined a vision for the city as a place with a thriving arts community, a year-round economy, and expanded community facilities and outstanding quality of life. There was also a specific recommendation that the city would complete an arts and culture master plan that would inventory the arts and cultural assets of the city, identify areas most suitable for arts and culture, and identify the uses, programs, and actions necessary to support arts and culture in the city. Beyond these regulatory recommendations, however, arts and culture plans can be powerful tools for cities and communities to foster community cohesion and civic pride, identify gaps and opportunities in the city's cultural landscape. It's a way to leverage arts and culture as generators of economic development and employment growth, and to enhance the quality of life of residents through community-based arts and recreational activities. Over the past eight months, the planning process has been guided by a steering committee comprised of representatives from the city council, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Department of Planning and Redevelopment, the Asbury Park Arts Council, the Monmouth County Department of Planning, and the New Jersey State Council on the Arts. In that time, the steering committee has received regular updates on the research, data gathering, and community engagement activities of the planning team. They have also been directly involved in the formulation of strategies and recommendations that are the outcome of these planning efforts. In addition to working with the steering committee, the community and the public have been consistently involved in the creation of this plan. Over the past eight months, our planning team has spent significant effort to learn about individual attitudes about art and culture, as well as community perception of what more is needed. In that pursuit, we have received 153 responses to an online survey as of today, conducted more than 20 interviews with representatives of city government, nonprofits, the school system, and others working in arts and culture throughout the city. We've conducted five focus groups with local creators and producers of cultural and community activities, and we hosted an open house at the Blackbird Community Commons with more than 80 participants in December. Overall, we can identify more than 500 individual touchpoints gained through our participation in multiple community events where individual conversations and actual community members rounded out our understanding of the cultural landscape and the needs of the city and the community. But opportunities for public input do not end tonight. As mentioned before, we are here asking for a referral to the Planning Board to begin the formal process of adopting the art and culture plan as a component of the city's master plan. That process will include two public meetings with opportunities for input in April and May at the Planning Board. However, before we get there, we will do a public presentation of the major recommendations of the plan on March 30 at 6:00 PM at the Asbury Park Public Library. Please mark your calendars. Please come to all and any of these events. Now I'll just jump into a little bit of community context. So as we've been working with the city, our steering committee, and the public on the Arts and Culture Plan, it's important to discuss a little of the community context as it relates to the art and cultural ecosystem. Tonight's presentation is meant to be only a brief introduction to the plan, and we would encourage anyone interested in learning more to come to our event at the library on March 30 and subsequent Planning Board meetings, where we will present more extensively about the research findings and recommendations of the plan. With that said, I'll briefly review some of the main findings that have been formulated in the creation of the plan. Our planning effort began with extensive research and community engagement to understand the state of existing art and cultural ecosystems within the city. As part of the data gathering effort, we investigated population demographics and census data. Using census data for the city, we can see that over the past 30 years, there has been a steady decline in the overall population of the city according to the census. This runs intuitively counter to the common perception of Asbury Park as a city booming with population growth. However, when taken in context to a rapidly increasing median age and income over the past 10 years, and modest housing growth, these trends are consistent with a gentrifying city that may be gaining more part-time residents and displacement of longtime full-time residents of the city. We undertook an inventory of arts and cultural assets throughout the city. The study shows a significant level of arts and cultural activity across all sectors of the population. In this study, we were able to identify nearly 180 individual creators and organizations related to arts and culture, as well as 80 venues, places, and facilities capable of supporting arts and cultural activity, and over 60 recurring programs and events that provide a strong sense of Asbury Park as a significant contributor to the regional art and cultural landscape and economy. When considering non-commercial activity and its relationship to the residential community, we also looked at the resources available through community facilities. We found—what we found is that while there are significant resources in both public and private schools, there are few spatial resources that are perceived as accessible or welcoming to the public. The precious few community facilities we do have are working hard to provide services, but this study has found more services and facilities are needed to fully engage the residential community in individual creative pursuits and collective activities. Asbury Park is well-known for many events and private venues that produce a significant number of arts and cultural offerings. We charted the frequency of all recurring programs we could find throughout the city and plotted them to understand how cultural activity is distributed throughout the year. What we discovered is that a seasonal nature of the city has a significant impact on the level of cultural activity, with most events occurring in the warmer months of the year. Furthermore, we examined how the prevalence of free and public events compared with that of paid and private events. The chart shows that while paid and private events generally continue throughout the year, almost all free and public programming for the community is limited to the tourist or warm seasons. This is highly indicative of a lack of high-quality, low-cost indoor facilities for hosting community programs in the off-season. On the right side of the slide, we also plotted the various formal venues in town. With seasonal outdoor venues on the left and year-round indoor venues on the right, the vertical axis defines active versus inactive venues. The take-home message here is that while we have a significant number of formal venues within the city, over 70% of the existing indoor venue capacity is completely inactive. It cannot be understated the detrimental impact this has on the local economic and employment picture when it comes to arts and culture. In terms of brands and markets, the community component of arts and culture is crucial to improving the quality of life of residents. However, it's also important to examine the different brands that are recognizable contributors to the commercial component of the arts and cultural economy of the city. Asbury Park has an established identity for beach food and live music. While they—while these may be Asbury Park's current strong suit, there are other components to the city brand as a cultural destination that should be leveraged, encouraged, and supported. Outdoor recreation beyond the beach, historical tourism, learning and making, dance, theater, and other performing arts all have significant potential for increasing Asbury Park's share of the regional creative economy and for engaging our residents in creative pursuits on the home front. When thinking about the role of the city, the private sector, and the nonprofit sector, what is needed is more collaboration and coordination. Each sector has a role to play in organizing activities that are the result of leveraging our significant spatial assets, securing funding, and connecting creators and audiences. It's clear that both the private sector and the public sector have a role to play, but more coordination between the two is necessary to navigate the complicated infrastructure that has grown around cultural activity and public space over the years. Any questions? Once we had a firm understanding of the art and cultural ecosystem, we worked with the public and the steering committee to develop a set of goals and specific strategies that would be used to define a vision for the future and establish how the city and its partners can address gaps in community services and programs related to arts and culture. These goals and strategies were presented at multiple public events, including an open house at Blackbird Community Commons in December, and five different focus groups made up of a diverse collection of local creators and community members. That engagement and testing of ideas allowed us to settle on a broadly supported set of four goals for the Arts and Culture Plan. Those are to augment the year-round quality of life, to expand the cultural production ecosystem, to foster inclusion, community cohesion, well-being, and lifelong learning, and to support tourism, creative enterprises, and the cultural economy. The plan also identifies four general strategies that can contribute to meeting these goals. Strategy one is to provide resources, facilities, and programs for individual creativity, recreation, and lifelong learning. There are some inspirational images of other facilities and other places that give you a flavor of what is needed in Asbury Park. Strategy two is to align development, land use, funding, and policies to support tourism and the homegrown creative economy. Similarly, Asbury Park needs to do more in terms of modernizing its zoning code and looking for ways to include new and encourage other uses within our residential and commercial environments. Strategy three is to leverage the brand of Asbury Park as an inclusive city where creativity thrives. Our visual brand is inconsistent and could use some harmonization, as well as provide an injection of creativity into the way we express our status as a seasonal beach community and a year-round artistic and creative community. Strategy four is to transform streets, parks, and public spaces to support next-level art and cultural placemaking. We use our cities and streets to a high degree in Asbury Park, but more can be done to make sure that they feel more balanced between the needs of people and the needs of cars. Now I will cover a few of the recommendations of the plan, the primary recommendations of the plan. While the goals and strategies set a general framework for the plan, we've also developed a significant number of specific recommendations that are meant to be implemented in the phased strategy that unfolds over many years. It's important to know that nothing in the plan is all or nothing, and it's not now or never. These are incremental steps that can be taken over time, with smaller actions building to larger actions. With that said, I will cover the main recommendations in very, very brief detail. Recommendation one is to expand resources to manage cultural and community programs. Recommendation two is to establish a funding stream for community arts, culture, and recreation. Recommendation three is to engage a cultural resources partner. Recommendation four is to develop a community culture center. Recommendation five is to harmonize visual branding and tourism marketing. Recommendation six is to support and connect community and cultural nodes and community gateways. The seventh recommendation is actually embedded in each of the previous recommendations, and that is, everything must be done from a framework of inclusion. Whether it's talking about community and cultural programs, cultural resources partner, a cultural community center, branding, or connection throughout the city, it must be about bringing our community together in ways that expresses our identity as a place where inclusion, diversity, and creativity live together in harmony. So what about the details? Well, there are a lot of details behind all this work that we will not be covering tonight. However, I will remind everyone here that we have an extensive presentation on March 30 at 6:00 PM at the Asbury Park Public Library, and there will be at least two public hearings where the precise details of the plan will be presented to the Planning Board and discussed at length. Please come. So that concludes our presentation tonight, and we respectfully ask that the council to consider a resolution of referral to the Planning Board for review and eventual adoption to the City of Ashburn. Thank you. I realize it's hard for most of you who know me to see me as a professional, but this is what I do. So, and obviously, you know, we're here to—I'm here to answer any questions you have, either from yourselves or if you aim to invite the public at this time.
I think we just want to thank you guys. I know the effort that you put in and spent some time with you all last week, Angela and I on a Zoom, so really appreciate the effort and the recommendations, and I love them broken up into kind of short and long-term goals, you know, end games. So just want to thank you and the committee.
Thank you, Eric. It was an excellent presentation, and all those that are involved with it.
I just want to say is, I know how much work went into this presentation and into doing all the work that is behind this that nobody gets to see. And so, thank you. Thank you to the Arts Council primarily because they have been the driving force behind the project.
And thanks to everyone who took part in this survey. Without a whole community, you wouldn't have the data that you have.
Absolutely.
So, guys did a great job. Thank you.
The community was—is going to continue to be instrumental in helping us get this plan to fruition.
I want to thank you, thank your committee, and so you're looking for an answer. So Donna put this on the meeting over the 20-second, please, so it can be passed on to the Planning Board.
Thank you. Wonderful. We look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Do you want us to put it on after the 30th? After you have your public session, or no? Okay.
The sooner we get it on, the sooner they can schedule a time at the Planning Board.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I didn't know if that was—if it was—if there was information—okay.
This is—you're just going to make a resolution referring it to the Planning Board, doesn't it?
Totally. Right. We may revise the details of the plan based on things we hear at our next public meeting.
That's what I thought, so does that matter?
No, because there will still be time before we go before the Planning Board. We don't have an official date for the Planning Board quite yet. We have a tentative date, and your referral will simply allow us to seek that initial approval, uh, initial hearing.
Thank you again.
We're now on to matters from the City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. I have a very short announcement from our communications director. We have children's reoccurring events at the library. There's one called Toddler Storytime. It's Mondays at 2:30. So join the little one in your life in the junior room of the library for stories and songs every Monday at 2:30. And this is a free event, and it's geared towards children between the ages of two to four. And although all ages are welcome, adult supervision is required. Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
The city of Asbury Park is paying tribute to the African-American culture on Saturday, March 11, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Asbury Park Senior Center. And I think that's all I've got. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
The Asbury Park Public Art Commission is seeking applications for the panels on the boardwalk-facing side of the sewer plant and partnering with the Arts Council for that project.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the City Manager.
I have nothing, Lisa.
Thanks.
Matters from the City Attorney.
Yes, nothing at this time.
Thanks, Fred.
May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Hi. Good evening. The Art Council, one more thing that's going to tell you what to do. By the way, my name is Rita Moreno. I just don't—I don't understand how we could go into such a big project. From what I gathered, I guess we're not paying for it? Did I hear that? I don't know. But anyway, I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about the unemployment rate in Asbury, for one thing. The state unemployment rate is 3.3. Ours is 10.8. Now something's got to be done. All these people that are working in this town, not one of them is a resident of Asbury Park. Now that—that's really saying something. Because you, the council, give permission for them to build, and in their instructions, they have to hire city employees. I mean, city residents. You have 10.8 unemployment rate. It's unheard of. And you don't think that's funny, or—I don't know, I wouldn't say funny, but you see Hispanics all over this town working, and our citizens not? You have to do something about that. I told you, you don't owe me piece ordnance of revolution. You have to get out off those chairs and go see what these builders are doing, and make sure they follow the law. They have to hire people, premier. And they're working on Sunday, no less. That's how we happen to see it. The city employees are watching other people that aren't citizens working. Now you know if they don't work, they're going to be selling drugs, right? So that's—it's—a no, you should be out there. You can't just sit up there and make decisions. You have to see if they're following them. Well, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the pilot program. The pilot program, I went back and reviewed. 90% goes to the city, the taxes, and 5%—no, 95 goes to the city, and 5% goes to the county. I want to know what goes on here with all this money coming in.
The time is up.
Okay.
Finish that last question, Rita.
The last question was, 95% of the pilots come into the city treasury. What do you do with all that money? Is what I want to know.
Okay, so let's go back to your unemployment rate. It is high. One thing we've initiated, and the city manager, when she came on board, said, like, what's one of your chief goals? There was workforce initiatives, and every project now being built throughout the city have to make a sincere effort to hire Asbury Park residents. There's a session tomorrow night at 9:30—from 6:30 to 9:30 at the Boys Club for the 22 units being built by Mumford. There'll be another session for them, so anybody can go to that tomorrow. And any project anywhere has to put in so many apprenticeships, so many interns, and so many scholarships. So we did enforce that, and we're trying to get people jobs. The project done by K-HOB, you know, there was like four, four, and four openings. One person showed up and one person finished the courses, and he got all four scholarships. So we're offering and offering and trying to do better. There's a good—I don't know if you get the news blasts every week as far as all the job openings, and they're not just in Asbury Park, they're throughout the county. And they're—it—some of them are like a bellhop at the Asbury Hotel. Some of them are being a CPA for a major corporation in Eaton Town. So I mean, we're addressing it, I think, better than you'd think, but, you know, we try to get people jobs, but that's—I think we're doing a good job there. As far as—if you're seeing people work on Sundays, don't wait till Wednesday and come to a council meeting and tell us. I mean, fill out one of those SDL forms, let it go through, because you're not supposed to be building—that's what—you know, and I know. If you ever wanted to get anything done in Asbury Park in the past, you just did it on the weekend because nobody would ever catch it. So nobody got permits, nobody got anything. We've changed that, but I mean, we don't have code enforcement inspectors out there on Sundays paying them overtime, driving around and looking for people working illegally. But if citizens see it, report it. You see it, report it. See it, report it. I mean, that's stressed in anything and everywhere. See it, report it, please, help us. Your last question, yes, twice, and I forgot it again.
What are you doing with the money?
We're balancing our budget.
Really?
Yes. I mean, yes, we're using it to help balance the budget, help try to keep at a steady level, not increase taxes astronomically because the Board of Education has to, because of a terrible S-2 bill, which should be redrawn by the state, but until the state addresses that, the Board of Education has to raise taxes. And so, it's a terrible bill. They're roped into it, so that money goes to pay bills and hopefully, like, you know, keep the tax rate at a steady level.
Oh, well, that's no way.
Okay, well, thank you. Next. Seeing nobody else, make a motion to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed.
Thank you.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of February 22, 2023. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
I now have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes from the special meeting on February 27, 2022—2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
abstain.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda, we have Resolutions 2023-146 through 2023-151, whereas Resolution 2023-151 is a resolution appointing Craig DePaola to the Parking Committee with a term to expire December 31, 2023. Do I have a motion for consent?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2023-152, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a dumpster for the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an eight-by-thirty-eight shed for the Beach Department.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-six, a resolution authorizing the purchase of access control security system at the new social services offices.
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing payment for emergency sewer bypass needed at Ridge Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-eight, a resolution awarding a contract to G M H Associates for bypass services needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-fifty-nine, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of all traffic solutions software.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-sixty, a resolution authorizing Bergen County Cooperative Pricing System membership.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-sixty-one, a resolution of support from Asbury Park Municipal Council authorizing the Sustainable Jersey Grant funded by P S E and G for, P S E G for Asbury Park Food Waste Diversion Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-one-sixty-two, a resolution of the city of Asbury Park releasing the performance bond for seven-twenty-two, seven-twenty-four, Cookman Avenue, block twenty-four oh five, lot one, and accepting a maintenance guarantee.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.